Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Peterson.
Here.
Councillor Geisler.
Here.
Councillor Nelson.
Here.
Councillor Hoshchild.
Here.
Mayor Boucher.
Here.
Announcements, this is a time that councillors can make announcements about anything they would like. Does anyone have any announcements tonight?
You're going to announce the obvious?
I have one, you know, got a little script here. There is a tradition in giving a key to the city to individuals and groups who've made important contributions to an entire community. As Natalie Peterson steps off the council tonight as part of her move back north, it's worthy to note that she herself has been a key to the city of Hermantown. Her dedication and passion as a city councillor over the last eight years was key in aiding many council-led projects to fruition, such as the Essential Wellness Center, Boulder Trail, and the Section 23 Sewer Line. Both the Hermantown Marketplace and the Hermantown Square, our entire city's overall marketing, branding, and imaging. Her efforts were key in areas beyond the city council as she was critical in helping Hawk Pride School Referendum successfully pass. At each turn, she's opened doors and created opportunities for others, even though she's moving back to her home. We will hope she will forever think of Hermantown as her own. We have a small gift of appreciation as you finish your time on the council. It's our way of giving you the key to the city.
Oh. Now you're gonna make me cry. Oh, my gosh, as soon as I start talking, then I start crying. Um, I just want to thank council, mayor, staff, the community. It's been just a joy to raise my family. We've been here for twenty-two years, raised kids, I've been as involved as I possibly could be. Um, hopefully in a lot of positive ways. This group has done amazing work in this community, um, making decisions to hopefully better the community, um, for the right reasons. The staff is amazing, one of the best. I think we all hired most of you, so I hope we feel that way. Um, but it's, it's, it's a special community to be a part of. And, um, I'm, you know, I'm from, I'm from International Falls originally, so I'm a northern Minnesota girl. My dad was a sheriff for twenty-seven years. Um, I know what it's like to be raised in a, in live and raise a family in a small community. And, um, this one is a little special in its own. Um, it's vibrant, it's connected, um, the values that are here within this community, the support. Um, I've watched, unfortunately, some sad situations with certain family and friends that have this communities rallied and supported without even question. And at the same time, they've gotten together and celebrated one another. And that's something to be very proud of, and I'm very proud to have been a part of it, so, thank you.
We have no public hearings for items that, under item five, this evening on the agenda. Communications, Kevin, we've got two highlighted here, the first one, twenty-two-nine-four. Is that the same as something that was just handed to us from Mr. Mayor?
Last meeting was handed out to you guys.
Well, we just received one tonight.
Oh.
New one. This is new.
Looks like it's been added on to.
Okay.
There's some additions on here.
Yep, on the second page.
And then we have one from P and R Properties that's in record. We have presentations in depth at the pre-agenda meeting. I'd like them to be given a summation at this meeting. Mr. Orm, you're, do you have a summation of the debt services budget for 2023?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight I presented to you kind of synopsis of what our 2023 debt service budgets will look like. Overall, the city has about thirty-three million in total debt. That amount has reduced, um, in 2022 because we have not issued any debt this year. Next year, we already have plans to issue probably two more million in debt to redo Richard Lindgren Road and to redo the Hermantown Road Bridge. We pay about three point seven five percent, sorry, three point seven five million annually to service our debt, that thirty-three million. The other piece I presented to you tonight was the sales tax fund itself. So that sales tax fund, uh, covers about seventy-three percent of our debt of the city is covered just by sales tax. Now, sales tax has certain uses that we can only use it for by the legislature. So I did include the sales tax budget. We budgeting three point three million in revenue and about three point three million in expenditures in 2023 from that sales tax fund. Questions on debt service or sales tax? Now, we'll bring the rest of the budget to you, um, later. We've also brought some other pieces to you, and we'll, the overall budget gets approved in December.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Thank you. And now, um, Mr. Wicklund, do you have a short synopsis of your presentation on the Community Recreation Initiative?
No, thank you, Mayor and council. We covered, uh, in pre-agenda both, uh, actions that are about to be taken on the communications side as well as, uh, information that'll be, uh, put out community-wide around education, around the upcoming referendum, around local option sales tax referred to as the Community Recreation Initiative. Uh, a citywide mailing is hitting mailboxes and has already started, uh, in terms of, uh, bringing folks up to speed. The biggest Q and A's that we've had through that process, um, to help people be clear and understand what they're walking into when they vote, whether it's an early voting or an election day, uh, is that it is three separate questions. They're not linked together, so one, two, or three can pass. And regardless of, uh, one, two, or three passing, it's a half percent sales tax increase, no matter what. It'll just be the time, uh, that we enact that tax. Uh, it is different than other taxes in that it does have a hard sunset due to our new regulations around local option sales tax at the legislative level. Uh, and there's more specificity in terms of what those sale taxes can be used for. Kind of like Kevin mentioned, on the, the new referendums around this are hyper-specific. So the questions that folks are encountering are a bit laborious on the, uh, ballot, but it outlines total amounts and specific amounts for any projects associated with this. Uh, we'll be doing our third information session on Wednesday here. That'll focus on the Arena Project. Folks have already attended, um, uh, the Fichtner Park Reimagining Project as well as the Trails piece. And those videos are online for folks who didn't see those meetings. We'll have two more public meetings at least in October and November, uh, and multiple tabling sessions, uh, some at the high school and then some others as folks kind of call in and need. So, so folks, the, the Recreation Initiative will just be a lot more prevalent, I think, in the community in the coming months leading up to the election.
Thank you for that. Um, next on the agenda is public discussion. This is the time that individuals can address the council about any item not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. Now, a lot of you are here for certain items on the agenda, and we will have a public discussion available when we address those issues. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the council about any item not on the agenda? If so, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. That also, invitation also includes to anyone attending the meeting online. If you wish to speak to the council, please lead with your name and address. Is there any?
We do have, uh, folks online, um, who are able to unmute themselves at any point during the meeting, if it's here or whenever it comes up that they're interested in speaking to a subject.
Are there any hands raised?
Not at this time.
Okay. Is there any public input on, and general discussion for the city council this evening? This will be the last opportunity for general public discussion in this meeting. If anyone wishes, wishes to speak to the council, please state your name and address for the record. That is on the agenda, sir, and we will have a time for public discussion during that item. So once we call that item, we will have public discussion on that, as well as the other ordinances and motions, with the exception of the first reading of the fee schedule. So if anyone has any general public discussion, please do so at this time. Otherwise, we will move to the consent agenda, which is the minutes approval of correction of the September sixth meeting and general city warrants in the amount of three hundred fifty-six dollars, nine hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-five cents. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councillor Geisler, second by Councillor Hoshchild. Roll call, please.
Councillor Geisler.
Aye.
Councillor Nelson.
Aye.
Councillor Hoshchild.
Aye.
Councillor Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is our first ordinance for a second reading this evening. This is ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash ten. An ordinance recommending that part of the Hermantown City Code be temporarily suspended to further study the earn a buck requirement for the Hermantown City two thousand twenty-two bull hunt. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, second.
Motion by Councillor Peterson, second by Councillor Nelson. This is, uh, would put the earn a buck program that we use on hold for one year to study its effectiveness. We have been asked to do this by bow hunters, and we've been told by the DNR and other agencies that are in the know that, that, uh, earning a buck is not, uh, helping increase the deer population or call the deer population as we needed to. So, uh, the population is apparently down right now, and by suspending this and studying it for a year, we're going to look at the effects and look at continuing, uh, the suspension or reinstatement of it again next year. Does any, do any councillors have questions or comments? Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash ten, either in chambers or online? If so, start with your name and address. Is there any public input on the temporarily, temporary suspension of the earn a buck requirement? This will be the last notice for public input on ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash ten. Roll call, please.
Councillor Nelson.
Aye.
Councillor Hoshchild.
Aye.
Councillor Peterson.
Aye.
Councillor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is the second reading of the ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash eleven. An ordinance amending Title II of the Hermantown City Code by amending the official zoning map, forty-seven forty-seven Hermantown Road, parcels three nine five zero zero one zero zero seven zero four five and three nine five zero zero one zero zero seven zero five zero. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councillor Peterson, second by Councillor Hoshchild. Mr. Johnson, would you please give us a short description of this ordinance?
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, before us this evening, it's a rezoning request for a twenty-seven acre property located between Hermantown Road and Anderson Road. This is a former Ingalls, uh, site that we're familiar with. Uh, this property has in the past functioned as a, a more of a commercial establishment, although it was in an R-three zoning district. Uh, the functioning of Ingalls predated the city and hence was essentially grandfathered in as a, as that type of use in that area. Uh, when this application came in, uh, staff looked at not only this existing property, but also, uh, adjoining properties in that area. Uh, what staff was finding is there is either commercially zoned properties, i.e. at the corner of Haynes Road and, um, and Hermantown Road, that's the Accret Auto as well as a BP Auto Station. And then other adjoining properties, all those zoned R-three residential do have commercial characteristics associated with those, uh, particularly the Salem Lutheran Church, which also includes a daycare, uh, the Kids College Daycare, the Estates Treasure Building, and, uh, the Keene Creek Townhomes does have some certain, uh, multifamily, uh, type of density associated with it that is commonly seen in, in some commercially zoned districts that way. Uh, this information was presented at the, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, previously back in August. Uh, at that time, staff had been recommending the approval, uh, or at least the recommendation to approve from the PNZ. Uh, the planning and zoning, uh, did have some concerns, particularly is if, uh, P and R Properties did not pursue, uh, this property. Right now, all that we're looking at is a rezoning request. There's not a particular, uh, application for site development associated with this. Uh, but at that time, planning and zoning was concerned that, uh, if there was a rezoning to the property and, and P and R did not go forward, that we would have a commercially zoned property. Uh, as I mentioned previously, uh, this property, although it is vacant, does have certain chara- characteristics associated with commercial zoning as well as other properties in that zoning district.
Thank you. Do any councillors have comments or questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd just comment that, uh, my employer holds contracts with P and R Properties, the applicant for this rezoning, and therefore will be abstaining from this vote.
And also not participating.
And also not participating.
Any councillors have any questions or comments? I wanted to ask a question of Mr. Johnson and, and to make this clear because someone mentioned it either during or after our last meeting, and that is, uh, the part that's asked to be rezoned is only a portion of the former Ingalls property and not the part that has been previously approved for residential planned unit development?
Uh, actually, we are going to rezone the entire twenty-seven acres, which does include that previously approved area. Uh, basically, that was the northern eight acres of this property. Uh, staff tries to, uh, avoid essentially split zonings of properties. So that's why, uh, we're pursuing, at least looking at the, both of these parcels that way. That previously approved, uh, planned unit development, uh, which happened in, between twenty and twenty-one, uh, that is still, uh, an approved project and could go forward underneath a, a commercial zoning as well. As a planned unit development isn't allowed in any zoning district within the city.
Thank you for clarifying that. Now, uh, we will open this up to public discussion. Uh, we're going to have public discussion, possibly both in chambers and online. I'm going to ask that everyone start with their name and address if they wish to speak, and the people in chambers can approach the podium and speak into the microphone. We normally have a three-minute limit on public input. Uh, we've never held that hard and fast to it, but if we start getting to six to ten minutes, we might ask somebody to, to sum things up a little bit. And also, uh, if anybody has anything that they would like to deliver to us in writing, they can give it to the city clerk and it will be distributed to us. Uh, is there anyone in chambers that wishes to speak to the council? If so, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor, councillors, Dante Tomasoni, uh, within our company's five-five-four-six Morris Thomas Road in Hermantown. Uh, councillor, mayor, I have, uh, submitted with our application a, a set of, um, a set of PowerPoint slides that, uh, will not fit within the four-minute time limit, but they are available if, uh, at the discretion of the councillor, the mayor, later on, uh, for rebuttal if needed or any subsequent testimony if requested. Um, tonight's hearing, uh, tonight's hearing, council members, it's, it's a zoning hearing. It's limited in scope, uh, to that of rezoning a piece of property from R-three to commercial. The piece of property is currently operating in a commercial capacity and it has been for thirty years. The piece of property is two city blocks from a major commercial vein in the city of Hermantown and just over a mile away from the Hermantown Major Commercial District. It sits contiguous next to a commercial operation that's next to another commercial operation that's across the street from a commercial operation, and it is itself sitting, uh, across the street from a commercial-like operation. All within this corridor, the R-three zoning of these operations came in under existing uses. An existing use uses zoning, uh, an existing use zoning does not change the commercial nature of the tract of the land or its operation. It is an exercise in municipal efficiency when the city was created. It's a way to allow an operation to continue without forcing an owner to have to reapply for a different zoning. It's also, and most importantly, a function of not removing a property, personal or operational right of the, of the owner during the zoning process. Again, for thirty years, this has been a commercial operation site, and it's currently a landscaping company is operating out of this site. For the reasons stated above, and solely for the reasons stated above, this zoning application for the rezoning commercial should be granted. Now, of course, there's a reason we're here today, uh, other than that rezoning is our application so that P and R Companies can redevelop the land in a way that is good for the community, good for the area, and will greatly benefit the citizens of Hermantown with minimal impact to the land, the neighboring properties, and all on a reduced footprint. The Planning and Zoning Commission appeared to have a crucial, a crucial message that ruled the day during the application there. That message was if there's no project, um, what does P and R do? If P and R doesn't build here, what happens to the project? Um, two answers were delivered as part of the record by the city administrator. One, if P and R doesn't build there, rezoning to a commercial district, it does not open Pandora's box. You can't just put a meatpacking plant there if we don't end the building, uh, uh, building. Uh, the CIDP Hermantown Statute is section five twenty dot O two. It, it prohibits any non-conforming use that doesn't apply with that zoning requirement. I think there's like fifty requirements. So, um, that is a protection for the community if, for some reason, we didn't, we did not build there. Um, there's no nuclear waste facility, Pig Farm, Menards, um, the slippery slope argument here. It just, it's simply inappropriately applied and it's not applicable today. Two, there is a project. We have, we have invested significant time, thought, money, and architectural resources into creating the project. Um, I could share with the council and the community today if it's requested later, but due to time limits, I'll, I'll talk about the nature of the project otherwise. But this project is before us because there is a need. There is a real strong need for housing in this company. Um, Sears is hiring four hundred people. Sears just announced, actually just today, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand square foot project called the Innovation Center of Excellence. That doesn't fit the Hermantown community, I don't know what does, but, um, Essentia is having trouble recruiting because of a lack of housing. Uh, these are nurses and doctors that take care of the people in Hermantown and the people that live here too. And they're having trouble bringing them to the community because we don't have enough housing. Um, and, you know, property taxes are going up, and property taxes are going up at a significant rate because there is a lack of supply in this community. This project will increase the supply, it will help stabilize prices, it will help stabilize the community and stabilize, um, housing in this area. Uh, the initial investment into this community, in this project, is, uh, thirty million dollars anticipated for phase one. If phase two goes through, it'll be an additional thirty million dollars. That will, that will put P and R's initial investment in the city of Hermantown up to nearly a hundred million dollars combined with Ari. We care about this community, we want to be a part of this community, and we want to invest everything we can into this community. Um, now, even with the scope and the scope of this hearing, um, you know, what the reason we're applying for is one floor. And the reason is, is because going up with wood is significantly less expensive than going out with concrete. Additionally, going up with wood reduces the footprint of the building. So now we have a smaller footprint of the building, we preserve green space, and we preserve the buffer between the communities, the single-family homes in this area. It keeps everything commercial going towards Haynes Road. So, that being said, we have those two main, two main reasons for application there. One, our project is befitting of this community. We plan to go taller because it reduces the footprint of the project and it allows for more green space. Two, this is our model. Um, if you, if you've had a chance to see Ari, and I invite anybody to do so that hasn't, um, it's how we make our buildings. It's a podium on the main level, it's indoor parking, it helps the quality of life for our tenants. And on top of it, it is one of the most energy-efficient buildings in potentially the country. Um, our buildings house all of the plumbing and heating systems in that podium level. And in, inside that podium level, you have fifty-degree heat that circulates hereon. We have a hundred and seventy thousand square foot building in Superior that was four hundred dollars to heat last February. We are energy efficient, we care about the footprint, and this is design we use. The other part about this building that's unique, um, that takes care of the citizens, that takes care of the neighboring properties, is that we are building into the hillside. So the measurement from the lower part of the building is going to need the commercial zoning. The measurement on the backside of the building into the hillside will be significantly lower to the trees. It will be closer to the forty-foot requirement of the R-three zoning. So the actual impact of this rezoning is minimal at best. Um, our demographics that attract our building, our tenants are young professionals, and they're retired Hermantown community members, typically fifty-five plus. Um, we are almost half and half between young professionals and, and fifty-five plus with some scattered in there. And so, um, we have a high quality of living that we provide in this building. This is going to be a market-rate building, there's not affordable aspect, affordability aspect to it. It is going to create quality of life, and it's going to do that for the citizens of Hermantown. Now, we've listened to the concerns of the community, and I just wanted to address a few, um, before we go. I think I'm probably getting near my buffer time, so I will go fast. Uh, number one, the school concern. Um, with our demographics in our buildings, um, Ari has twelve families out of a hundred and forty-seven units. Eleven of them moved from Hermantown into Ari. We have one family that moved from Duluth. So we will create a significant community benefit without stressing our school district. Uh, number two, traffic. So we have a ratio of one point seven units or one point seven cars per unit. At a hundred and forty units, I know how the math shakes out. I can tell you as an experience and, and somebody who has sat in Ari and watched the cars go in and out, so I can say this with full confidence today, that the actual impact on the roads is not substantial, and it doesn't affect the daily lives of the citizens. I had, I sat there almost an entire day and never saw more than five cars at that light on a one-way in and a one-way out. And the reason is, is because when you have our demographics, people don't just leave out the building at the same time. You have young professionals that go to work at different times, you have fifty-five plus that maybe never leave, and we have work from home, we have a lot of work from home ability in our, in our, in our units. So it will not be felt on the road like you'll hear some of the concerns. Um, there's no evidence that apartment building reduces property values. High-quality buildings actually have positive effects on the neighboring neighborhoods. Um, and finally, the concerns about heights and views and seeing the building and looking at the building. The closest, the closest property to the building construction in the north property that is actually going to be just to our development, not the acres to the north, has a hundred feet of trees between the back porch and our property, a hundred feet wide of pine trees, and that's not even tall. And the last view you'll ever see is when you're going north on fifty-three and you're looking at Ari, you cannot see it. And that building is not built into the hillside. Those are the things that we know the community thinks about, those are the things we know the citizens think about, and that's why we've designed this project to have a minimal impact as far as aesthetically on the community, but have a positive impact when it comes to property taxes, potentially over a million dollars a year to the community and, and how it's going to help with our housing crisis. Uh, thank you, councillors, I'll be available for any questions if need.
Thank you, we may have some later, but.
Can I, can I just ask one question? Um, I apologize, Dante. Um, if you could just talk about, I know there's an intention of kind of adding a little bit of public benefit to your plan. I don't know if you're prepared to speak to that. Because I know your location with the, the new trail that is heavily used by our community. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely, um, so we're, we're designing the project around the trail, of course, um, so that our tenants can use the trail. We're also planning on putting a parking lot, a public parking lot, and adding public parking space for the community. Um, we're entertaining, uh, we're entertaining pavilion-type settings, uh, near there, and that's kind of still in the drawing phase. Um, but yes, we want the public to be able to drive through, use the project. And with that, there'll be some of the green space that the public's going to be able to use adjacent, adjacent to the trail if they want to stop, have a picnic, whatever they like to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Anything else from council? Okay, who would like to be next? Anyone in the room wish to speak to the council? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Dave Miller, forty-seven ninety-three Anderson Road. And I, I handed out to the councillors, uh, the front, the first page and a half is from the, uh, last meeting, but then there's additions that I added to it, and hope you can read it, uh, here. And I, I have to say, first of all, that I would really like to see Rod be able to sell his property and, and retire. Um, and I also, um, applaud P and R for the quality of work and the, the thoughts and the research that goes into this. But I come to you as a neighbour, and I hope I represent my neighbours, um, as part of this meeting here too. And, and a couple of thoughts here. The Keens Creek development is included with commercial properties, but is actually a residential development with single-story and some walkout basements. I don't see it as an extreme commercial type of property. There's a single-story daycare that is hardly commercial and has a low impact on the neighborhood. And the single-story antique store is very, is barely open and very low impact. And the single story antique store is very, is barely open and very low impact. Um, these are grand, well, the daycare is not grandfathered, but, um, um, not nearly the impact. Um, and I, I noted, uh, actually I, today I read the agenda. And, and it was very, very interesting reading the agenda, kind of seeing some of the things that come out in it. And I, I urge those in the community to, to, to read those kinds of things here too. But as I read the agenda, there was a reference to area one. And, and in the, this property is in area one, it goes from what I understand back to the ten, twelve year old rezoning or, um, comprehensive zoning. But it does not include commercial use as I read it. Um, uh, the, the current PUD is the northern eight acres, um, is included in the commercial rezoning. And would this allow for more sixty-five foot hot tall units? Um, as I understand, in the current conversation, there's, there's phase one, but phase two adds a second. If you look on the, uh, agenda, it does show pictures of, of those. And I say this for the community members here. Um, but with, with that, um, that area included in the commercial, it does allow, as I see it, it allows for another area instead of the twenty-four, twenty-five residential properties that were originally planned there. Um, uh, a, a point of interest is, is that the zoning meeting, an F I Salter representative stated that if the commercial zoning was not allowed in this development, that they would walk away from their project. What would happen if P and R walked away from this whole thing after it was rezoned? I mean, the, the, certainly the potential is there. Um, today I drove around the block of Anderson Road, Haynes Road, uh, Hermantown Road and Oakstrom Road and only looked at the properties in Hermantown. And as best I could come up with, there's fifty-one residential properties around that block. They're all appear to be private households. And assuming an average of three people per household, that would be a total of a hundred and fifty-three souls that live in, in those houses. Add in Keens Creek at forty-four units with two per household is an additional eighty-eight for two hundred, a total of two hundred and forty-one people that live within our neighborhood. Um, compare that to a hundred and forty units with an average of two point four souls equals two hundred and thirty-six. Multiply that by two and you get six hundred and seventy-two. Add in a potential phase three and you're over a thousand residents in that block. Um, they speak of phase two and phase three third certainly is a potential, especially if the northern. No, we already know that the northerly eight acres is own commercial. Um, reading some of the notes in the agenda, it states that R three allows for ten usages, ten different types of usages. Commercial allows for fifty-six usages. What could those be? I mean, we don't know what they are. But it's kind of like vote on it now and find out later if, uh, if things change here. Uh, according to the zoning details, uh, comparing R three to commercial, and this again is in the agenda. The setbacks and lot sizes allow much more density per lot on any development as a commercial property versus a, an R three property. So what are the limits and what is the potential for that? Um, more than anything, as a Hermantown resident, speaking with my neighbors. We need zoning changes in Hermantown that groups residential property with residential property and commercial with commercial. Right now, we see this random plopping of commercial into residential areas. And, and I'm not sure that the, the citizens benefit and certainly the atmosphere of Hermantown does not. Um, looking at the area development, uh, it's right on the corner of a busy major highway with traffic lights. This development is located on, on two local roads with limited visibility. Can they handle the two hundred to four hundred vehicles twice a day that would be coming and going from the property? More than anything, right now, we have the opportunity to make some decisions um, that, that can affect the whole community in the long run. Um, I did not include this in my letter, but getting a current comprehensive plan that delineates commercial, residential and the other zoning, I, I think is very, very important. I, if Eric has time to do it, I mean, that's, that's probably the most important thing. But our opportunity to do something right is right now because we can't change it in the future. So I urge you to contemplate what's going on, think about it and, uh, try and do the right thing for the citizens of Hermantown, especially the residential ones. Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Anything from council? No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, name and address, please.
Rod Salin, thirty-two ninety-six North Little Alden Lake Road. I've owned and operated a commercial business on this property. I've been here since April of nineteen seventy-four, uh, been involved in ownership since nineteen eighty-seven. And so we've got, uh, some history, uh, since I've been here, but the beginnings of Engwells really go back to the late, uh, eighteen hundreds, eighteen eighty-eight, something like that. I think retail actually started on the property in maybe nineteen thirty, um, and it has grown from there. Uh, the operation obviously has been commercial. Uh, and, and, and what we're talking about tonight, I think, just tells me that we're trying to be consistent with, uh, with what it has been, uh, for a long time. I'm selling the site, uh, to P and R. Uh, I have a contract, uh, have, uh, earnest money. Uh, um, and hopefully this, uh, this project, uh, will go forward. Uh, in my getting to know P and R since the contract was signed last June, June of twenty-one. Uh, they are, uh, to me, some real quality people. Uh, we've all seen the kind of project that, uh, they've done here in Hermantown and we've all heard stories of other projects that, uh, that they've done. Um, I'm glad from my perspective that, that P and R is interested, uh, in, uh, in a project like this. Rezoning the site, from my perspective, is not non-conforming by any means. Uh, as I've said, we've operated a commercial business there for a number of years. Again, I've been there for, I'm, I'm in year number forty-eight. Uh, we were here, uh, Engwells was here prior to Hermantown becoming, um, a city. One of the questions that came up at the planning and zoning meeting, and I believe came up, uh, even last week is traffic. And, and you know, let me tell you a little bit about traffic that we have generated, uh, as, as we have operated. Um, uh, we've operated a number of departments, uh, on that property, retail floral, which most people uh, know us for, a garden center activity. Uh, we've operated a corn maze, uh, for nine years. We've got a number of other departments, interior plantscape, exterior plantscape, um, a number of things. The garden center, as an example, uh, in the months of May and June would generate four thousand plus transactions each month. Uh, retail floral, which is not garden center, uh, would generate probably ten to fifteen, uh, drive-in, walk-in customers on a daily basis. Uh, we also had, uh, uh, employees and depending upon the time of the year, it could be from twenty-five to sixty employees, uh, coming and going, um, off the property. Uh, the corn maze, uh, when that operated, the ten, eleven weeks out of the year. We would have between depending upon the year, five halls and seventy-five hundred people, uh, come through the corn maze. So that says roughly that on the low end, it might be a hundred and eighty-four vehicles coming in and out every day. Excuse me, uh, to corn maze weekends when that could be two hundred and seventy-five cars, uh, coming in and out, uh, when the corn maze is open. I think that there was really only one time where we created a problem. And that was during a fall fest that we had, that we had fifteen hundred people on one day and people were parking on Hermantown Road and it, uh, it was, uh, it was a problem. But that's it. I think that's the only time that I've ever heard that, uh, uh, that, uh, that we've had any kind of an issue. I support, it is self-serving. Everybody expects me to say this and, and, and I do, but I believe, uh, uh, in, uh, in what P and R is trying to do. I support, uh, what they are doing, uh, trying to minimize the footprint on the property. The conversations actually go back, uh, here in Hermantown to two thousand fourteen, two thousand thirteen. Where, uh, where I came in and when worked with Hermantown planning and zoning on what would be acceptable to Hermantown. Um, I've got, um, I've got pictures, I've got drawings from two thousand fourteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen. And things have changed, uh, in, uh, in those, uh, whatever that is, uh, eight years. Uh, and, and with what P and R is presenting for the rezoning. It is a smaller footprint than what we have been talking about, uh, uh, for, uh, those, uh, those eight years. I've got Hermantown, uh, uh, Hermantown's important to me. And, uh, excuse me, this, I didn't expect this. Hermantown's important to me. I've been here again for forty-eight years. Uh, I am proud, uh, to be part of Hermantown and proud, proud to have had Engwells. Uh, and, and what we have accomplished over the years in being hopefully a good citizen, uh, here in Hermantown. Um, um, I would not be selling a piece of property for a project that I didn't think, uh, was going to benefit Hermantown. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Beverly Donaldson, thirty-seven thirteen Keen Creek Lane.
The last name again?
Donaldson.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you say your address to me one more time? Thirty-seven thirteen Keen Creek Lane. Okay. Okay.
Go ahead.
My husband and I have been residents of Hermantown for nearly nine years. I walk the trail five days a week, belong to the Y and serve as an election judge to do my part to support the community. We were drawn to Hermantown for all the reasons listed on the website. Primarily country living and a small town community feel. It is unlikely we would have purchased had it been known at the time of the zoning change being planned to commercial. We have been advised that emotions and feelings have no place in aspects of zoning changes. Then perhaps the website verbiage needs to be revised. It is my understanding that in another situation, the mayor did voice concern that emergency services are being stretched with the requested modifications made at that time. It would appear that in this situation, council's main focus is increasing the tax base for Hermantown without foresight regarding the impact affecting roads, road maintenance, police coverage, volunteer fire protect, protection, crowding of the schools, plus the impact a commercial zoning change could make on the real estate taxes for homes in the neighborhood is unknown. Walking along Hermantown Road to access the new border trail system is precarious at best. Due to the lack of sidewalks, extremely narrow shoulders, plus the hills curves and cars driving in excess of the forty mile per hour posted, particularly in the winter. Albeit, I understand that zoning changes do not dictate attention to this type of detail. However, simple common sense does. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in chambers that wishes to speak to the council?
I'm Diane Langley from thirty-seven nineteen Keen Creek Lane. I did send, um, you letters in the past couple of weeks, uh, telling you about my, uh, concerns about the rezoning of this twenty-seven acres. And I don't care to go over all mine because I'm sure you've heard many of them over and over again. But I did want to reiterate my last comment to you. It was delaying this rezoning until the eighteenth month study is completed, I think is prudent. For the future plan, we'll certainly designate better sites for multifamily units where roadways, environment, public transit, transit and walkways would be considered. Possibly this study could include other, um, options for this land. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name's Tammy Johnson. I'm at thirty-eight eighty-four Oakstrom Road. I know you're voting on this tonight. I want you to please keep in mind that your planning and zoning board thought this project was too big. They unanimously voted against it. The citizens here tonight that you represent are asking you not to vote with P and R's zoning request. Please consider the people that you, the people that you are, the citizens that you're here representing for us. Please keep that in mind when you vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak to the council? Please state your name and address for the record.
Alex Bushy, F I Salter, eight hundred B West Railroad Street. Uh, my company has the PUD for the single family homes on the northern eight acres. Um, we're in support of this project, support of additional housing in the community because it is well needed. Um, P and R is a great company. They've done a great project in Hermantown. They're Hermantown people. I think it's a good option to have a developer that's committed to a community to do that. Our project, um, is struggling because costs are high. Uh, partnering with a group like P and R on infrastructure could potentially save our project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mary Miller at forty-seven ninety-three Anderson Road.
Last name again was?
Mary Miller.
Miller, okay.
Yep. I've lived in Hermantown all my life and, um, you know, I was talking about the traffic, which Mr. Saline, you know, talked about too, but it, it has changed that for our whole, our whole neighborhood has changed with different traffic patterns that have happened. Um, now I have to sit at, at the end of my driveway to wait for cars to go by. So the, the traffic has increased both on the Anderson Road. Um, due to whatever roads they can't use, but, and also on the Hermantown Road as well. And that is, that is a concern, you know, um, which I wanted to say. And also, um, I know these buildings are beautiful. And they, they want to, to have it zoned to commercial so they can be built high. Well, when you walk by there, all the other commercial places in that area that we're talking about are low profile. And to me, you know, to see something built high is it's going to be, you know, just not a part, no, just not a part of our neighborhood. And then I wonder, why is it in our world, and maybe none of you will like what I'm going to say, but why is it in our world that big money always wins out? And benefits a few and does nothing for the, for the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak to the council? Your name and address, sir?
Captain Shay, four seven seven Anderson Road. Um, I think I probably just real brief here, I'll echo, or echo a lot of what all my other neighbors have pointed out. Um, the gentleman from Engwells, you know, he mentioned traffic, but we have to factor in that seasonal traffic. That's not every day people living there going up and down the road. Uh, PR representative, he talked about our, our places bring in, I believe he said fifty percent are retired, fifty percent are young people moving in, but he claimed these buildings are helping the whole community. Or half of them are already retired. They're not working in the community anymore. They're just living here, which is fine. I'm not, nothing against that. So I think just the increased traffic, like mentioned, the, uh, the zoning committee already turned down this idea, so just ask the, the city council factors that in also along with all of our concerns. just ask that the city council factors that in also along with all of our concerns.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers or is there anyone online that wishes to speak?
If anyone on the online setting would like to speak, they can unmute themselves and just say their name and address. We do have a small handful of folks still online.
We'll just give that short opportunity for anyone online. And if someone is in chambers, just state your name and address and we'll get going with your input.
David Johnson, forty-seven ninety-two Anderson Road. And really, I'm just another voice to support my neighbors here that have spoken already. There isn't much that I could really add that they haven't said other than to say that I support what they've said. My wife and I walk, we live on Anderson Road. We walk either around Oakstrom, Hermantown, Haynes and back, or we go over to Stebner and back. We've altered our walking pattern. We go down Oakstrom Road and back because we don't feel safe on either Hermantown or Anderson, given the traffic. So I think it is a factor and it's a study that should be done in the neighborhood to see if it would support this business. And then I would just ask that you guys be strategic about the growth in Hermantown. We're gonna have growth. People want to come here. I'm not debating that. I'm not, I wouldn't fight that at all. I think, I think we live in a great community. But I think you need to be strategic and have a city plan for what we're doing. If we had had a city plan, at the time we added the walking trail, we put a, we would have put sidewalks on Anderson and Hermantown when we read those roads, but we didn't. I have six grandchildren that I walked down to that trail. It's not safe. So I need, I think you really need to consider that. I think you need to consider the voices that have been spoken. Uh, P and R gave a great presentation, well-thought-out. Um, I have a question. Is the property on, of Sted for sale? Or is it owned by Engwells?
The, um, which property on Uggstead are you speaking? Building itself? I know that they own a residence next door that they bought that has a for-sale sign in it.
I understand, or what I've heard is apartment building, stuff like that.
Uh.
So just another voice to support for the community. Hope you plan strategically.
Mr. Johnson, there may have been some confusion on the Uggstead Road property with a house that they purchased next door that does have a for-sale sign at it that is owned by P and R.
Yeah, it's called by somebody, the apartment building.
No, he, he said that it's not. I, I would trust the owner.
Okay.
But there is a for-sale sign on a house next door.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in chambers or online that wishes to speak to the council? Please state your name and address. First one up gets it. We've, we've got time for everyone.
Forty-seven seven four Anderson Road. I've spoken to you before at the other meetings. Probably don't want to hear from me again. I don't want to speak again. But one thing that has been left out is that I was told that the, the Hermantown is looking at making the Hermantown Road, uh, business corridor. Is that correct?
I have not heard any plans in that direction. I think, I think there may be a possibility in the future if commercial development was moving into the area, but I, I don't think there are any immediate plans.
Glad to hear that because I was told that by.
Let's ask Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, let's.
I believe what she may be referencing is this could be a study area as far as a comprehensive plan, given the nature that there are already some existing commercial uses and commercial-like uses in that area.
So with, with the existing uses being grandfathered in, some of them, and some of them being commercial, this may be studied in the new comprehensive plan.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, then I do have to voice support for getting a good comprehensive plan going with citizen input. You said about a year and a half it would take to get a plan like that, but.
Well, what we're doing right now is we're updating the ongoing comprehensive plan. Uh, it should take two years, Eric, to, to complete. We're a little bit behind schedule on that. We would like to do it every twenty years. It was last done in two thousand.
I also am not against the development. I just need the appropriate size. But on the comprehensive plan, do you have citizen input or?
There, there will be a time for public input when the comprehensive plan process goes through. You'll watch for public announcements for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And one, we had one other person in the room that wanted to speak.
Hi. My name is Crystal Andries. I live at three eight four seven Arthur Lane in Hermantown. Um, I just wanted to bring up the fact that I walk those roads on Hermantown and Anderson quite often. Uh, my father lives at forty-eight fifty-two Anderson Road and I grew up there. Um, I would just want to make mention that, um, oftentimes Hermantown PD will sit in my father's driveway or right along there running traffic control, um, catching speeders. Um, it's already, traffic is a problem on Anderson Road. People are speeding. There's no sidewalks. Um, I'd like to have a study done on how much traffic, um, is being run by Hermantown PD on Anderson Road, please.
Is that the one at the intersection of Anderson and Oakstrom?
No, it's, it's further down towards Stebner.
Yeah.
Four eight five two Anderson Road. I think they run it at four eight five one Anderson Road is what they do for traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more person who would like to speak. Please start with your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Dave Allison, thirty-seven thirty-five King Creek Lane. My interest is that if possible, some clarification in the process. Uh, it's my understanding that the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission voted against changing this parcel to commercial. If the, uh, council decides to support the zoning change to commercial, the question is, will there be limitations to the scope of the development or could there be significant changes?
Um, I'll defer it to that question when you're done to Mr. Johnson.
My last comment, if, like, as a commercial par, parcel, uh, this land's highest and best use will be increased by a zoning change to commercial. How will this all be monitored? And I don't know that I need an answer tonight. Uh, I don't know that there is an answer tonight.
Mr. Allison, I think we can get a short answer from Mr. Johnson here on what would happen next were this to pass or in any commercial zone where a business wants to locate. Eric?
Great, thank you. Um, the, this did appear before Planning and Zoning. Planning and zoning is an advisory board to the city council, uh, in most issues. Um, the Planning and Zoning, uh, is approving body in a handful of things. One of those is what's called a commercial industrial development permit. That's assuming a property is zoned commercial. So, um, if this parcel was to be rezoned, if an application came in for the use as P and R, uh, has proposed, or any other type of commercial that is allowed under the commercial district, uh, there would still be a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning. Uh, there'd be notices sent out to property owners, uh, adjacent to the property to be able to attend that public hearing and, and state, uh, any questions, comments, concerns at that. But there is, uh, once again, regardless whether it's R three or commercial zoning, there is a process that the, the city moves through for the review and comment period associated with projects.
And at that time, then, the, uh, commercial plan for the property would be disclosed?
Upon an application, uh, yes, there'd be public notice to adjoining properties. There would be a meeting at the Planning and Zoning Commission for that.
So we don't need to wait to see it built to see what it is?
No. There's an approval process that everything goes through.
That was my question. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the council on this matter? If so, please state your name and address.
Hi, Kim Parmeter, fifty-five ninety Stark Road in Midway Township. My business is at fifty ninety-four Miller Trunk Highway in Hermantown. Good evening, councilors, Mayor Bushay, and administration. My name is Kim Parmeter. I'm the president and CEO of the Hermantown Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of businesses and future business in our community. I know this evening's, um, uh, meeting is about the ordinance. I want to speak tonight to what it could mean. Lack of quality market rate housing is a key workforce issue for many businesses. I've heard from several employers, both pre and post-pandemic, that housing is and continues to be a major challenge in attracting and retaining talent right here in our area, impacted enough such that major plans have been altered to reach talent in different markets, which means we lost jobs to more competitive communities. According to the Minnesota Chamber Foundation's twenty thirty report on a framework for economic growth, we have some work to do in our Minnesota communities. Aging populations and low birth rates, they certainly aren't helping. Competitive communities will need to deliver on childcare, digital connectivity, and necessary housing to remain relevant. These are foundational elements of a community's vitality and growth. We need to strengthen these assets in Hermantown. Unfortunately, Minnesota's housing market is not producing enough affordable housing for homeowners. In twenty eighteen, the Governor's Task Force on Housing, uh, their report found that Minnesota needs to enable private sector building of three hundred thousand new homes to stabilize prices and keep up with demand this decade. So new strategies are clearly needed. City Council, the requests for development will be coming to your agenda over and over and over again. I urge you to welcome it. These are people who seek the opportunity. They see it. They are willing to take the financial risk to move our community forward. Continue to make Hermantown a desirable place to not only work and live in, but to do business in as well. Our chamber truly applauds the efforts of the city of Hermantown for their willingness to listen to and learn about ways to help address this issue and for what it's already done. We also applaud the efforts of P and R companies in their ongoing pursuit to provide additional, much-needed quality housing for our region and really truly appreciate the excellent work they've already done in our community, most notably at Uggstead and Highway fifty-three with the Aerie Complex. Now it's the home to more than a hundred individuals, uh, two hundred, I believe. Um, it's truly had a ripple effect in our housing market in the past year. In regards to any project, we respect a fair process whereby all the steps are followed and all stakeholders have the opportunity to have their voices heard, including the voice of business. We further believe that a well-planned community gives businesses and residents the best chance to succeed and create economic stability and new opportunities for generations of Hermantown residents. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to council? If so, please state your name and address.
Paul Johnson, thirty-eight eighty-four Oakstrom Road. Under R three, you still can put a housing development in there. You don't have to go big. Why is the city trying to make this area a commercial corridor? We already have the Hermantown marketplace and there is property for sale up in that area that you can develop. What is so special about this property that you keep changing ordinances for this property? Zone C, commercial zoning, King Creek setback, property sizes. Once you go commercial, you can change planning and zoning and you can change those ordinances again. You know, what stops you? Change them before. So I ask you not to make it commercial. Keep it R three. You still can develop it. We're not preventing you from developing. We just ask the size, the quantity, the trap, the danger to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, do we have any hands raised online?
Uh, we do not have any hands raised online right now, no.
Okay, we will ask one more time for public input, both in chambers and online. If anyone wishes to speak to the council, please state your name and address.
Mary Miller, forty-seven ninety-three Anderson Road. It is zoned R three and it can be built on. I would like to see it built on as an R three instead of a high thing up in the sky as it, if it were zoned commercial. I know it's going to be developed, but looking at all the other businesses on Hermantown Road, they all fit into that. They all fit into that area. And to put a big, high apartment building would be, I don't know, I think it'd be just kind of disheartening. You know, they still can build, but build within the means of our neighborhood where, you know, where we all live. Thank you.
Thank you. Please repeat your name and address.
Still Beverly Donaldson at thirty-seven thirteen King Creek Lane.
Thank you.
My comment is that I have no question that their building is fantastic and gorgeous and all perfect for everyone. It is not plunked down in the middle of a community that's already, majority of which is residential. I think that should be a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anyone online? If there is nothing more, we will close the public comment period and we will move to a section that we rarely get to, and that is, uh, councilors again have an opportunity to ask questions and make comments. Is there any questions or comments from council? Anything that needs clarification? With that being said, we will move to a roll call.
Counselor Hushchild.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Deb Stane.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bushay.
Aye.
We will now take a short break in case people want to orderly exit chambers. Uh, you're all invited to stick around for the rest of the agenda. It's meetings, so we're gonna end the break and move along to the second reading or the first reading of Ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash twelve, an ordinance amending the Hermantown Code of Ordinances, Section two seventy fee schedule. We will have further description at our next meeting when we have the second reading and a vote, and we will allow for public input at that time. Next is resolutions. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one fourteen, a resolution to adopt the proposed property tax and proposed budget for taxes payable in two thousand twenty-three and scheduling a truth and taxation hearing. That hearing would be on December fifth. We have a motion.
So move.
Second. Sorry.
Motion by Counselor Hushchild, second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Arm, do we have any further explanation needed here?
I'll give a short one, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
The council annually, uh, second meeting in September, we adopt the preliminary proposed property tax levy. We're required to give that to Saint Louis County by the end of the month, and so we're, um, bringing that forward to you tonight. That amount is seven million, six hundred and six thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. It's a six point nine one percent increase over the total levy, um, of the current year. The effective tax rate next year will decrease two point six two percent under this, uh, proposal. If you guys, uh, adopt it tonight, you can still reduce it between now and, uh, truth and taxation hearing, December fifth. Uh, it cannot be raised though.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions from council, comments? Is there any public input on the proposed property tax and proposed budget?
Actually, I'm sorry. I know you said that, but I just had a question. Okay, so we're, does the preliminary, when is the official vote on it?
December fifth.
December.
Truth and taxation hearing is December fifth. You can take action that night or you could wait one more meeting and be prepared to take final action.
God, thanks.
Any other question?
Nope.
Okay, any public input? Either in chambers or online? Any public input on this matter? Last opportunity for public input. Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Counselor Hushchild.
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one fifteen, a resolution establishing an, establishing an absentee ballot board for the two thousand twenty-two general election. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Geisler. Um, do we need an explanation from Jackie on this? Or?
If she would like, this is.
She has her three words.
This was also done pretty, you know. Go ahead and do your three words.
Same as primary.
There you go.
Just required to pass a resolution. We passed one for the primary, repeating it for the general, same exact board serving.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any public input either in chambers or online? Uh, anybody not wanna be on the board that's listening online? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one fifteen? Last opportunity for public input on the absentee ballot board. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Counselor Hushchild.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one sixteen. Resolution authorizing the city of Herman Town to partner with Minnesota Trout Unlimited on a grant funding request associated with the Oakstrom Road culvert at Keene Creek Park and contributing thirty-five thousand dollars towards the purchase and installation of a culvert. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, second.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Arm, we need a little explanation.
Mr. Johnson will give us a.
Mr. Johnson will do that?
And I'll try not to be overly wordy as I usually am.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Uh, the gist of this is, is this is a grant opportunity that Minnesota Trout Unlimited has identified for the replacement of one of the city's culverts. Uh, initial discussions back in February was looking at the city would be responsible for uh the entirety of a project could be upwards of three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, this grant opportunity uh would change that where the grant would cover ninety percent of that cost and the city be responsible for ten percent of that project, essentially thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this has been a great partnership so far between ourselves, uh, the county and Trout Unlimited with all the work they've been doing.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one sixteen? Last opportunity for public input on this resolution. Roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson.
Aye.
Counselor Hushchild.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye, and next we have an opportunity for a motion to recess that I would like to defer to one person to allow them to make that.
I forgot this was the last one. Knuckles for.
Well, you have to give them to me again, I guess.
We have a motion for recess.
I am very pleased and um to have a final motion for recess.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Peterson for last and a second by Counselor Hushchild. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.